Do you think it's five thirty-one and we are gonna start our meeting? Well, we're in school board on March fourteenth. Um, I'm gonna, this is the public.
Open the public here.
Over the public hearing.
Yeah.
Got it. So we will start with a public hearing. To discuss the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated federal and food service grant revenue. And I will read. A notice of public hearing memo for RSA one ninety-eight. Twenty dash B, the Mount Vernon School Board will hold a public hearing to discuss the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated federal food service grant revenue. Hearing will be held at five thirty, so here we are, and I will defer to Ms. Facey.
Sure.
For details. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, so we started this practice last year of accepting unanticipated. Uh, revenue, uh, for both federal grants as well as food service allocation because we've been receiving. Supply chain grants that were unanticipated. Um, so basically, the, um, the revenues that are being accepted are offset by expenditures, so it's not additional. Revenue for unassigned fund balance or anything like that. So this is just going into the, um, into the fund or into the, the, um. Revenue and then offset by expenditures. So. You'll see attached to the memo is a listing of all of the grants. Um, they, there's multiple for some of them. And that's because we receive, uh, the same grant in, um, every year. Uh, if we don't expend all of the funds in that particular year, then it rolls to the next year. So you'll see some funds that are left over, um, in prior years. So we want to be able to. Uh, spend those funds if, um, if possible. And if we have activities, um, to use them for. So the reason we have to do this is. We can only spend up to the amount of funds that were appropriated. So if we're going above the amount of the budget that was appropriated, then we need to accept these funds. Um, to increase the amount of expenditure, but knowing that it is offset by revenue. So we're not spending more money. Um, than is allowed, um, and that was approved.
Yeah.
So the. Food service supply chain grants, those, um, those we received in several installments since April twenty-two. Uh, some of that was deferred to be able to use for allowable, um, expenditures. In subsequent years, um, those have to be earmarked for perishables, so we mostly use those for milk and, um, and produce. So we try to use those as best we can to offset food costs, but we can't just apply those as bottom line, you know. On offset to our food costs. They have to be for, uh, specific items. So this is, um. Something that is really best practice. I know this has always been in this little districts, but we started this last year to accept these funds. Um, and provide additional transparency for grant funding that the district receives and also allowing us to, to spend remedies. Any questions?
Questions?
Public hearing, so there's, um. Also to hear from the public.
So what's, what's the incremental number you see?
So you'll see FY twenty-four is the amount that was approved. Um, and then we have what we are actually, um, asking to be able to spend. So the incremental amount. Or, um. The grants is one seventeen, for the federal grants is two eighty-five. And then the incremental amount for the supply chain grants is nine thousand five hundred and sixty. And I think I hopefully wrote the motion. Yeah, the, the motion is for the, the total of those two.
Where is that motion?
Um, it's at the bottom of the memo.
The first page.
On the first page, yeah.
Well, you wanna do that after your close of public hearing?
Yeah.
For me.
Ah, yeah, okay.
This is just the chit chat and receive feedback, saying how wonderful the board is, the business administration is. To be so transparent with the acceptance of grants, including which I would say Hannaford to schools and box tops.
Yeah.
So we are accepting box tops and Hannaford to schools.
Yeah. So some, some funds you do receive, um, or we do accept during board meetings. So that's when they'll see. You know, those, um, acceptances, but we need to officially accept this so that we can spend those, those monies.
Well, last time, questions or comments for any on this? So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on the acceptance of food grant monies.
In federal, federal.
And there was nobody online. Questions? Good. Thank you. Any questions?
And there's no time requirement for a public hearing.
That's correct. So, votes?
I'll second.
All in favor? Passes four, nothing? Open the regular meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, we will now open our regular school board meeting at five thirty-six. Make a note, uh, that George Taurus is not available tonight due to work commitments. And I'm also gonna defer Mr. Chamberlain to explain that we've got new board members who can't be, um, sworn in yet legally. So we have a, a good friend back for tonight. So I just want you to, to walk everybody through the procedure and why we're, we're kind of a shuffle deck tonight a little bit.
Sure, as today is March fourteenth and the election was Tuesday, March twelfth, there's a five-day race period for the opportunity to recount. And so before we can seat the board, we have to exhaust the grace period. Um, thank you for, uh, your intended, uh, work and also your end to, to see these wonderful. Um, and very important seats. So once the grace period is over, then we can swear in and we will see the new board. Um, the urgency around tonight is the public hearing, which is already posted, um, as well as staffing. Um, this is a meeting timely. Um, for the staffing base to meet the RSA requirement that Mike will speak to when we get there. So. We appreciate the continuing with the current school board, the school board to turn over when the next person are sworn in, which will happen after the grace period. That make sense?
Just wanted to beat it up and thank you, Ms. Lawrence, for making a cameo repeat.
Happy to make a cameo. One last.
Anytime.
One last time.
We have room.
I'm, yes, I'm, I'm on that side.
Most spittles.
Yeah, next time. No, she won't.
So at this point, I will take a motion to accept. The federal, uh, food service grant monies, unanticipated funds. As outlined by Ms. Facey in our public session.
So.
So there's a, um, would you want to make an announcement? Yeah, so under RSA one ninety-eight. Twenty dash B, the total amount of funds for the district to accept and expend. For unanticipated federal and food services grants, one twenty-six eight forty-five.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Passes four, nothing?
Thank you.
I will read the public comment section. I probably should have done that before, but, oh. Well, now we will take public comment tonight from a virtual audience. You wish to speak during the public comment session, we'll allow in-person guests to speak first for three minutes. Once we go through all in-person guests, we will open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, we please ask that you raise your virtual hand, enter your full name and your avatar profile bar. When speaking, turn your camera on and also say your full name and town of residence. When these are complete, you also will have three minutes to speak.
Well, I would actually like to speak tonight for my three minutes. Do I have to walk around over there?
I don't think you need to do that, but I'll recognize.
They may just speak. Yeah, they make John Glover do it. They make him walk around. So, uh, concerned parent, have kids here, have kids at AMS, NEWA, just got NEWA results, right? I asked my children, what's different about AMS from here? Cause we were discussing it last time. My child replied to me. That, uh, at Amherst. All the sections are timed. They are very strict about the time and they were all on the same day. So it is a far more stressful event when they're taking NEWA exams at Amherst. So as a parent of someone who, uh, has, his children are going to and are growing, uh, will go to Amherst. Uh, middle school, I'm concerned about how they get NEWA's. So I'd like to present that to the, the, of the board and the, um. The, the administration that, uh, it might be worthwhile looking at how NEWA exams are given at the Amherst Middle School.
Do you mean SAS? Do you mean the state test?
I think so.
We just did NEWA, dude.
But we, well, we.
It was SAS that we brought here and got the results on. It was SAS.
SAS? Well.
The NEWA students just took NEWA, right?
Well, last week they took SAS writing. They just received NEWA reports which were taken in, uh, end of January, beginning of February.
Okay, but we just got, we did results for the board.
Yeah.
But NEWA, yeah, we got SAS and the whole, how they took SAS last week, to be honest, was different than they did last year.
Okay, but the question I asked my child was right after the last meeting, so it was not in reference to SAS, it was in reference to previous testing.
So it would have been NEWA.
It would have been NEWA.
I can tell you in either case, it's not timed in either case. There's no time limit on SAS.
Or NEWA.
Or NEWA. Right, but they, so they have unlimited at our school and I can tell you, there's no.
Right.
There's a, as you stated correctly, yeah, there is no time.
I'm concerned that Amherst imposed a time limit on, on the children at Amherst.
Perfect, we will look at it. So, yeah, Andrew.
Okay, I'm gonna take a look into it.
Yeah. I'm glad we got the timeline, gotta figure it out. We'll, we'll dig in. Come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Due to the fact that, um, as Mr. Chamberlain outlined, we have a. Uh, a prior board meeting operating tonight until we can get, um, leave.
Start it.
Sure, man, thank you. Um. We will not do our board organization tonight for Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, maybe responsibility, so we'll defer that until next month's meeting. Um. So we are up to at five forty-three. Public input, one of two. I know that we just had Mrs. Stokinger. Is there anybody online? No, sir. Okay, thank you. Um, consent agenda for approval tonight is for the draft minutes of our temporary fifteenth meeting. Uh, I'll open it up. Questions or comments on that one item in the consent agenda? Um, seeing none, I'll take a motion to accept consent agenda, item one, which is the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll accept motion.
Well, sorry. First and second, uh, all those in favor? Passes four, nothing? Um, next we're up to our reports and I will. Hand the floor over to Mr. Leckleyer for an update on the middle school.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to start off by. Thanking, uh, the board for all of your work and, um, support through the process, the budget process. Uh, we were very pleased, uh, how things turned out this week and, um. To make sure that you were recognized, uh, showed a tremendous amount of support, but I know how many hours of work go through, uh, and it starts. Like, basically a year ago, you know? Um, so thank you, and I also just wanna thank our community for their ongoing support regardless of how they voted. Um, we feel a tremendous amount of support for the work that's happening here, so, uh, appreciate that. Uh, it's been a busy week in the village and, uh, and I see the dedication, the pride, the spirit of our community. And again, regardless of what side of the aisle you are on, um, that oozes out. Last night, Dave Stern got up. Talked about how we are all neighbors and people applaud it, and I just thought that was, that was just, it was just cool. It was a neat way to start the meeting, you know, just to kind of set that. Um, that we are all neighbors. I know we take a lot of pride in the village and, uh, so I am honored to be, to be part of that and, uh. And again, thank you for, for your work and, and your support. Uh, all right, with that said, uh, it's been a busy month, lot happening. So I'd like to talk about, you know, our goals each month. Um, I just wanted to start off with, uh, a little bit on, on, um. The SEL piece. One of the things that we talked about, uh, we talked about last year, but we talked about over the summer is the responsive classroom, responsive school. Work that we do, we're very intentional about that. Uh, it's in the fabric of our schedule, it's in the language we use with students, it's how we talk to kids. It's how we, um, run our classrooms in terms of, uh, some of the methods we use around management and the strategies we use around that are intentional. And, um, we did sort of a refresher. So you might remember we had, uh. Uh, a representative from responsive classroom, um, through some work Christine had done. We were, we were given sort of this opportunity to have somebody come in and look through. Our school and, and how are we doing and what's the climate and culture and the language and all these things that we're doing. Uh, but it really trickles into methods of instruction and how we, um, maximize efficiency around instructional strategies in our classroom. So. She was here for the day, she walked around, she gave us feedback, and then I was able to spend, uh, a good chunk of time on our early release. Uh, going over that with our staff and we worked together on, um, some of these strategies and it was very successful and beneficial. So. Um, so really good work, early release time, um, and that really kind of came full circle with that early release that started with her visit, uh, the representatives, uh. From responsive classrooms, visit back in the fall. So, uh, just wanna give enough to you there. Um, also. I have to thank our library. Uh, Bonnie and Joanne from the library came over for our soar assembly. We focused on others first. This was the Friday before break. We did our falcon chant. Um. We talked about others first kindness, that was the theme. Um, and then we played some fun games and then people basically had their ears ringing on the way out because we, we did our little chant. So it was a lot of fun. Uh, very spirited and, uh, a really good way to go into the break. Um. Thank you, Andrew, for talking about the testing. Um, two things. So we finished our winter testing in early February. And then we did a lot of work over the course of the month of February reviewing the data as we do. Um, I do that work in grade level teams with the teachers. We do that work, um, at some of our staff meetings, but the deep work happens at those grade level meetings. Um, I just wanna recognize the work of our staff. It's sometimes pretty deep, pretty heavy, um, but really meaningful conversations when we look at growth of learning over time, which is the most important to me. The most important data point is are the students growing? Each student, no matter where they start, are they showing us that adequate growth? So really deep and meaningful conversations. And then we did SAS, uh, SAS testing, state testing, uh, writing. Uh, this is the first time we've given the, uh, writing test in March, separate from the other, the other state tests. Uh, so this year, the writing is in March, the reading and math is going to be in May. Uh, each student spent about, it took them about two days. Some students needed more time, uh, but we gave them. A chunk of time over those two days and then we had more time, you know, if they needed it. Uh, students took it really seriously, really dug in. The writing takes a lot of perseverance to push through that. Uh, I'd say more than the other tests in terms of the amount of stick with it-ness you need, uh, on the writing. So I was really pleased, grades three through six, took the, the state test and, uh, just really pleased with our students and, and, uh, and their work on that. Um, other than that, I think most of the summaries are pretty straightforward in the report this month. Um. We did our Egyptian museum, you might have heard of that. Yeah, it's part of that. Uh, it was just a really neat, one of the things we tried to do is build connections across. Content areas, including specials, and that was really an all-in approach, uh, and it really played out really nicely. Um, the Egyptian unit is super popular with our kids. Um, so they set up a museum all around the school and the, the whole school, which is the beauty of MBBS. Every student was able to be part of that. So they walked through, they saw that, the art teacher was part of that, and of course, the classroom teachers in grade six, so. Just a nice, uh, visual of the work that they've been doing. Sixth graders were very proud to show the kindergarteners for a second, you know, some of the work that they've done, so. That was, uh, a, a positive day. Uh, and that is my report. Give me questions?
Questions or comments?
Tom, other testing?
Yeah.
That was this week?
That was last week.
Last week?
Yeah. And then we had a few students that spilled over depending on like if they're absent, if they're sick for a couple of days. The window runs. The window runs for two weeks, but we actually just got a message from the state, they're gonna allow a few more days for makeup beyond the two-week window. Um, so you have to get the test within those two weeks and, and, uh, and within that, the way that we set the schedule up. Is we have two two-hour blocks and then we really personalize it from there. So if the students need more time, we, they have more time, you know. So they know they're, they're, they're given the time they need. Uh, but it might look a little bit different after those two scheduled blocks for the grade levels. Uh, I'd say typically ninety percent of the students finish. Or more, maybe ninety-five percent, depending on the grade level, in the two two-hour blocks, and then we have other time as, as needed. There's a saturation issue, saturation point, you know, after two hours, typically, we're gonna kick it out to another day. We're not gonna keep them two hours long. So.
Thank you. I just, that's where I was headed.
Yes.
Do you have parameters of when you gotta get it done?
Just burnout. At a certain point, it's just.
Showing the after.
Collish and it's been, we'll kick it to another day. Yeah, or even another week, like if it's Friday, we're, you know, we're not going into Friday afternoon or.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next item on our agenda for this evening is personnel. And I will handle the floor over to Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, thank you. Um. So. But I'd like kind of divide this into kind of two sections, like during public, I'll talk a little bit about the process. That, that we went through as we bring forth, uh, the, the whole slate of teacher nominations. Uh, that we are going to after non-public ask the board to, to approve. Um. But what I wanted to share at this moment of the meeting is, is, it's all a little bit about the process, you know, everyone, the teacher and, and staff member that we bring forth to the board to. To approve the nomination is, is been fully, fully evaluated, um, by Tom McLeiter, uh, intimately conversed and supported and, and. And work with, uh, the superintendent Christine Maywell, uh, throughout the school year. And then we have a series of meetings where we. Discuss staffing, you know, s- staffs, not individual members, areas of, you know, you know, growth and, and areas of. Of where they're strong and, uh, we decide, you know, how we're going to get to this list of, of, of people. We pay particular attention to. Uh. Teachers who are moving from a probationary contract to a continuing contract. So in non-public, we'll talk a little bit about. Looks and, uh, and then after non-public, this evening, we'll go ahead and come out and ask you to approve it. We could, so that'll kind of. Be how the rest of the meeting goes. Any more questions about the process? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, just wanted to circle back real quick on the, all the treasurer reports. Haven't we seen those before? Not that I studied, but is there a reason why we're getting like from July all the way all of us? Were there adjustments made?
Uh, no, I think that's just. Based on, I mean, case study.
Saying it.
Based on when we received them.
That's fine. This was curious.
I thought we already looked at that. Hmm, I thought we already looked at the treasurer reports. Over the last year.
So you ones we get regularly and, you know, maybe that's.
Yeah.
Game.
Yeah. Oh.
Okay. Um, our next item for discussion is the proposed full-year twenty-five calendar discussion. So.
Yeah.
Do, we'll turn that over to, uh, Steve Chamberlain.
Okay, I mean, I sent this that conversation. If you guys have any questions, please feel free, Mr. Chamberlain, please.
So, uh, just a little bit of process. Uh, we, there was a draft calendar of all the SA, of the district calendars presented at the last SAU meeting. Uh, once that was proposed and members of the Mount Vernon Education Association noticed the lack of alignment with the. Amherst calendar regarding early release days. Um, they reached out and proposed converting three early release days to full days of school. Obviously, because one of the things that Mike's talked about since inception is, is instructional time. And, um, and so, uh, uh, they brought that here. That would, if, um, that would eliminate. April and early release in November, which is wonderful because November has a parent-teacher conference, it's got veterans and it's got Thanksgiving. So putting that is really nice. It would, um, remove one in March because we have a PD day now in March, all aligned on the voting day. Next year, this year it was because of the timing, we, it was an empty day, but next year it'll be a teacher workshop or professional development day. And it would remove the last one in June. So, um. That is the recommendation of the leadership team that we align and add six, it's really more than six hours of instructional time because it makes them full days. So it actually increases the value of the morning as well, the continuity. There's one little piece. So we did a really good job. It's, it's catching up. So last year when I was interim, Sue. Uh, we had a lot of, I've got, I received significant number of emails from faculty and community about opening our schools in election. Um, that, you know, we controlled access is important and all, and we have, you know, thousands go through South Dakota High School and hundreds go through Mount Vernon. So this year, for the local election, we had no school. Um, because the primaries lately had school in the primary and there was some. You know, I read something about the, that many voters coming in, it wasn't peace and serenity for Dan and your school. But of course, we did well. The national elections, parent-teacher conference in March of the PD day, but of course, there's one more. That's the gubernatorial primary on September tenth. So, August, that's it. It's September tenth is what I've been told. Um, so. The recommendation. We think is in the eleventh is slated as early release. So if we're comfortable with it, it's a very small electorate. We're moving the September eleventh early release to the tenth. That would get youngsters out of here by buses, Tom.
Uh, dismissal will be eleven thirty.
And so you're really talking about seven to eleven thirty of, of here, having the concerns. Which I don't think is, now, uh, one thing about Mike and Heidi, Christine were talking about this, we just opened school right after Labor Day and to have a, a day off of no school is problematic. So. A recommendation is we move, and, and it's not a, it's, it's election, I don't want to diminish it, but it's not a heavy, it's not national, it's not the local. Um, so we move the September eleventh to the tenth. In that, uh, we're having this discussed with all the boards. And reduce the number of early release from ten to seven. And if that works for this wonderful august body. Then we would adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five. This calendar aligns with the MVEA contract. With a continuation of the MOU, which in the contract, Mount Vernon's CBA is the only contract that requires late starts. But they have agreed the second year to continue the early release. That was collaborative and, um, last, this year we piloted a eleven to seven-ish, Tom, parent-teacher conference.
Uh, it was twelve. I wanna say it was twelve to seven, and that reclaimed a half day. And so instead of having a night and a day, we, we actually saved time there. And they agreed to continue that practice. It was like a pilot this year and the MVEA felt good about that practice. So the proposed calendar. Seven early releases, the eleventh moved to tenth. Is supported by MVEA, aligned with the CBA, and if the board is so, uh, willing, we could adopt it and that would be the calendar going in. And I don't, not if there's any more elections this next year. That's my hope.
And the parent-teacher thing was on with it?
It's on, um, now, the, the national election day next year. It's on the, um, presidential, sorry, presidential election day. The, November fifth, we're turning that into a, that's the, Tom, that'll be the twelve to seven if you do that. Yeah, that's, that's part of your game. But it won't be the kids in school in the national election and we use that for parent-teacher, which is a push, right? We lost a day anyway. You want me to pick it up when I put it down? Um, and then. Uh, they were in pretty good shape. And one of the things and notes that Mount Vernon has always had an extra professional development day, Amherst just to come, so we are really.
So we are really nice alignment now to work on some things you just spoke to. We can have meetings about testing and about transition and about more collaboration because the calendars are going to be really aligned. Cool beans? So if you would make the motion and approve the calendar, Chelsea would be grateful to get this one off the list. So what I, but well.
I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
Questions or comments? I have more.
Uh, I have comments. Well, go ahead. Late potential school or potential snow makeup days? Can we include the facility in that description?
Yes, I can change that to school cancellation. Yeah, whatever. Yeah, you get a ding ding. So that, because that will align with contract full length. You get a ding ding.
Nice work, Pete. Full star.
I apologize for that omission. No, that's fine. It's. You get the ding ding. All right.
Scandor?
That's a highly coveted thing, Dave. Right? Aren't they highly coveted?
Are highly coveted.
The juice is worth the steeps.
Yeah, highly coveted. Motion to be second?
Yeah.
We. Yeah. For the comment and. You know, all those in favor? Pass this for nothing.
Love it.
Good to go.
I'll put this. Thank you so much.
Oh, your next one there, yeah. Um, next item is to receive an update on the vendor report. Hearing Mr. Chamberlain.
Yeah, happy to, real quick. So, um, we, Roger, Mike, um, myself met with the two representatives from Harriman and had our first just introductory, uh, meeting. Um, they asked for, um, the NESTED report, um, so they can take a look at our population because of that component of the building project. Um, they asked to, to take a, a look at the negotiated agreement with Emerson Tuition. So we can all start to work on developing a timeline based on the, the, the dates and benchmarks in that. Um, they asked for all the drawings of the village school, both digitally and hard copy. We are providing that. And, um, we look, they also asked for, we started this working committee, um, four or five like K eight size schools around three hundred and twenty, so we can start looking at what a K eight school in New Hampshire with similar funding, right? Um, you know, wouldn't look like so, um, they asked for those, um, obviously they have connections as well. So we're going to start, um, maybe doing some visits and taking a look at what does a three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty-ish K through A school look like regarding specials and PE class and health class and, and how do, how do schools do it? And so they asked for like schools that we had a committee had looked at. Tom, if you remember, we've looked at a bunch, a bunch of those.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so, and then, uh, we're going to reconvene in, um, ahead of the April board meeting, right? We met prior to board meetings and we'll meet with Harriman and we'll start working, but, um, they're going to work on timeline and working backwards from two thousand and twenty-five and all those notices. Um, and so we'll have a report, um, to the board about their work aligning with the benchmarks in the negotiating agreement. Because that really is the driver, right? The timelines that are in that agreement.
I offered to visit the schools near the lakes in July. I'll do it. I'll do it. Um, Steve's going to do, uh, the North Country in January. Appreciate that.
Deal, yeah. But so we had wonderful entry meeting and the work has begun.
And this is the next committee, the, before the April Mont Vernon.
Directly. Yeah, that's, that was four thirty, five thirty is when we met the last time.
Okay. Are we going to reach out for more members or are we out of spirit with the community or are we out of suspicion?
Happy to. We should have been a pleasure, whatever you'd like.
I know of at least one committee member, former board member. Not me, though I, I mean, I would also, but a former board member who is very interested in participating.
Love it. You want to send me that? I'm happy.
I think we need a hundred.
Another one or two.
The more.
Yeah, right. And the more constituent groups that we can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, other comment on the meeting, I, I guess we can do it in the meeting before the next board meeting. It's maybe some communication to the community. So yesterday at the town meeting, I had a whole bunch of people just didn't know what was going on. So I think maybe we should. We can talk about it then, but maybe send out a communication where we're at, what's going on, et cetera.
Yeah, uh, we did a press release on the naming of Harriman. Right?
Yeah, we did.
The whys. The whys, the current state, the things we ruled out, there's that. And actually, thank you. And one of the, um, Harriman asked, um, do you want to give a separate major, separate website about the project? So we'll talk about it. Okay, yeah, I'm in. Whatever we can do, we heard that. And from. Yeah, on the same day, yeah, we heard from, yeah, but more communication about it, I'm saying your background.
Which is curious, did we send a letter or communicate to the other?
Yeah, we communicated. And they were, um, very pleased with the process and understood the choice. Very gracious. They were very gracious.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the board review policies as a first reading. EBB, EBBD, GBCD, IJL, and JCA. And for this, I will motion to my policy expert.
Hey, thanks. Happy to be here.
Is Sarah Lawrence.
Um, so I did put notes in the Trello card if anybody wants to review those, but these were, um, brought up at the last SAU board meeting. So EBB is the school safety program, um, currently adopted in all districts. Uh, the NHSBA came out with an update, so this policy just reflects that update. Um, policy edits reflect the update. EBBD is indoor air quality and water quality. This policy was last reviewed in two thousand and thirteen. Um, the only major addition is a section that includes water quality and access. So it covers lead and states that water fountains need to be separate from hand washing state, uh, stations, um, in accordance with EDGOL B twenty-one eighteen. Um, GBCD is the background investigation and criminal history record check. So this was part of the fall twenty twenty-three NHSBA policy update. It was revised to reflect SB thirty-nine, uh, which reversed legislative legislation, making the state responsible for criminal history checks. Um, and one other small, uh, change that the policy committee, uh, did hear was removing the definition of a designated volunteer and bumping that to IJOC, which we'll talk about as well, um, essentially just consolidating where definitions are housed. Um, IJL is the library resources selection and reconsideration. Um, here there was an appendix, uh, that was added with a form to make that a more actionable policy. So everything is all together in one place. And JCA is the change of class for school assignment, um, its best interest and manifest hardship. Um, so that was reviewed, um, in depth, uh, especially by Tim and Anna and edited to clarify school days um, versus business days, uh, where and where it's governed by statute versus where it's not. So just, uh, edits made for clarity. Any questions on any of those or?
We haven't changed from the SAU.
No, they've not changed from the SAU, so, um, yeah.
Do we need to do anything on that or just wait till the next time it was second reading? Do we accept them as, as read?
You can view this as first and second reading and go to adopt them if you'd like. Which historically we've done.
I, I have one question on JCA. Number three, B, tuition determination. And my question is, is all of that language state? Not state driven, but crafted and and released by the state, because a lot of our policies are.
I'm just kidding. No, I'm all set to go.
So that the one I brought up, the, the.
This is the one we also, um, Steve worked on and worked with our attorneys on this language. Um, uh, much of it is from the school boards association, but some was tweaked based on our own, um, experiences along with support from our attorneys.
And it aligns with the statute.
Correct.
Yep.
Comfortable with that, Pete?
Oh. I'm concerned about the tuition part. So, but I don't think we can make a change to it. It's going to be something that stays.
That is correct.
I think we all have the same concerns, similar concerns.
Our policy does not, uh, grant anything above what the RSA outlines. So there's, uh, there's not wiggle room to, um, lessen anything in here because of the RSA. Uh, Stephen, if you have anything else to add.
That was well said.
Okay.
Um, we were very careful not to grant anything beyond the explicit language of the RSA.
So I will accept the motion to, um, modify it as first and second reading and acceptance of said policies listed.
Make that motion. A second.
All those in favor? Pass for nothing. Next second round of policy. Again, Ms. Lawrence, but the board is to review policies as a first reading of IJOC and JICDA slash GBEBB.
Yes.
At my bow. So we can policy, so Ms. Lawrence again, if you do your.
Yes, of course. So IJOC is the volunteer policy, um, previously adopted in Mount Vernon in two thousand and eight, so it's been a while since this policy has been touched. Um, the policy committee reviewed the Amherst School Board's policy because it was, um, quite a bit different. They had theirs crafted, um, by, with a lot of legal advice. Um, the Amherst School Board reviewed their existing policy and decided not to make any changes to that current policy um, other than adding some references at the bottom of the existing one, um, the Mount Vernon and so he and existing policies, um, essentially were revised to be more, um, in alignment. Um, so IJOC, as I mentioned before, would now house the definition for designated volunteer and policy GBCD, um, was edited to remove that definition. So essentially the definition lives in one place only for clarification. Um, all boards would need to, well, our board and the other boards that are making the same shift would need to approve the edited IJOC and GBCD. So I know GBCD is not in this packet. Um, so I would just kind of put a pin in that that needs to be looked at next time because of the edits that remain there. Does that make sense? Okay, um, JICDA slash GBEBB is the staff and student interaction. Uh, this policy is currently a South Hegan only policy. Um, it's being brought forth to Emerson, Mount Vernon for adoption or consideration for adoption since students have cell phones much younger. Um, so the policy committee felt that this was an appropriate policy to bring forward for that reason. Um, if it were adopted in Mount Vernon, clearly the header would be changed. I know it says it's a South Hegan policy, but that would be, um, updated. GBEBB stands alone right now, um, but JICDA slash GBEBB are exactly the same. Um, so it would, it would basically be this one that now has combined header, all of the alphabet soup together. The slash JICDA slash GBEBB would be the policy. So there wouldn't be two separate policies. It would be this since they're identical. Um, yes, so one document would come up in both folders just for clarification. So it would be exactly the same thing, just in two locations.
So we need to accept those, uh, and do the previous, it was just true to take these as first reading.
You can do either. Uh, I think the big thing that I would consider is are there any changes that you could foresee wanting to make between the first and second reading? Do you want additional time to consider it? Like, did you have a chance to read it over? Jess and I did because we were on the policy committee, but you and Andrew may want time to check it out. Yeah, so this one, these might be more appropriate as a first reading and then bring it back.
These, please, we didn't go over, just say you were right.
I don't think we brought them forward in the SAU package. Did we? There may have been confusion if I'm remembering the right meeting, but I could be misremembering a different meeting. There was confusion as to why they were in a packet. See, I'm just though with the South Hegan ones.
And Chelsea sent out a clarifying after.
Yes, yeah, that wasn't actually, huh?
So the overall process is it was parked in two different places. We just kind of.
Yes, yeah, it is staff-student interaction. Well, number one, it's not a current, it's not an existing policy here. Um, so it's South Hegan only, so it would be new here, not new. It's in another district, um, and it is, uh, it follows an NHSBA sample. So it's not, I mean, it's not like way out in left field. Um, it's just because it seems like it might be applicable here.
Thank you. Um, do we need to accept it as first reading? Yes, no?
I really don't think you need to accept it as a first read, but I would just put it on the agenda next time for a second read.
And I, I want from Mr. Torres, but also for each to have the opportunity to provide input, so does I. As a board.
Policy's big. I get a little fired up about it. It's a big thing. I love following. Get ready. I'm, I'm going to fight anyone for it.
It's like the meat of what we can do was set policies for them to follow. Yeah. So it just can.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
As always, well done on policy committee.
You're welcome.
Assistants for. Exactly.
And I did put those notes, if you want to see them for next time, they're on this set of cards here for this meeting. So you can see the notes that are there that helps. That can be that one forward.
Okay. Next on our agenda for tonight, safe grants, more discussion on safe grants. This basic.
Exciting.
Yes, it is very exciting.
Really great, fabulous.
So just for some background information, um, the New Hampshire Department of Education was allocated ten million dollars in state public school infrastructure funds to support initiatives for grants to improve safety and security. Uh, so as part of this safe grant round three, um, it opened back in October. Um, it was a, uh, the first come, first served. So it opened at ten AM, so Roger and I were at the ready, um, to submit applications and we were successful in receiving the maximum amount, um, to be awarded, which is a hundred thousand dollars.
Awesome. So good.
For school building, so we actually got that for all of the schools in SEU thirty-nine, so we were really excited about that. So it's great. So we were awarded, um, three separate grants um, in different categories, so alarm, um, what are the other two categories?
Access control.
Control.
And alert.
And alert, yeah. So we can talk more about, um, the specifics of the applications in non-public. We typically don't like to, um, talk too much about that, uh, security issues in, in public settings, but uh, those are the three categories. So we're very excited. So what we need to do is, um, have the board chair sign the agreement, um, with the, with the department. So we would ask for permissions from the board to, for the chair to sign that. So you made a motion to that fact.
Question on, uh, those safe grants, how long did it take for? How long do we have to use?
Yep, so we need to obligate the funds prior to the end of fiscal year and we need to spend the funds prior to the end of the calendar year.
So for July or December of twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool. I, uh, I still most do, uh, give the board chair the power to.
Sign the safety. If Brian, right?
Yes.
A second.
All those in favor? Pass this for nothing?
Thank you.
We don't, thank you. That's awesome. It's like getting some seats on Southwest.
Oh, yeah. You know, we were, it was kind of funny. They're like concentrating us in like the more, um, ready with our applications. And it's actually, you know, title on waiting list, so. Yeah, they were like.
Not need to base it to different resources and the skill and talent.
Yeah.
That's a good trick. I don't have the skill and talent. We got this around the table. Who couldn't get it?
That's awesome.
Nice work. Yeah.
Probably happy.
Yeah. So good.
Well, getting grass up and right.
Mm-hmm. Nice.
Uh, we are up to our second public input, two of two. Mr. Chamberlain, is anybody on our Zoom call tonight?
No, sir.
Okay.
However, what time did the board meeting officially open?
Uh, thirty-seven, we're in the shape. We've done.
Sure.
Now I will take a.
Yes.
So actually we have, we're going to non-public for two reasons. See, we're doing a ninety-one dash eight, three, two, C and I. C and I replication security. C and I replication of security.
Two, C and I, in addition to this one posted.
Yeah, it's all.
So at this point, I'll take a motion to go into non-public for, I say ninety-one dash eight, three, two, and also two dash C and I.
My second. All those in favor?
And we will be coming out of non-public and taking action.
We do our second public comment at that point, so.
You said for public comment.
Yeah, that's why I asked what time, because you're cruising with that.